Good afternoon, all. I'd like to welcome you and call this meeting to order, please. Is the mics on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome you. Mrs. Byram, can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Ms. Quinn Turn. Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you folks now to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And when we finish, I will ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Today is reflection of many people who lost their lives 22 years ago. We remember them, the families who suffered loss, and also our firefighters, EMS, police workers, and anyone that was in those two public buildings that day. So we remain vigilant and we always remember the sacrifices that was made that day. And I think Ms. Anderson has something she wanted to read?
Yes, thank you. So for the husband who told his wife, "I love you," one last time before his phone went, or before his plane went down; for the wife who stopped in the stairs to call her husband to say, "I love you forever; for the mothers and fathers who kissed their kids goodbye the morning they died; for the policemen who rushed in with a fireman to help others only to die themselves. Today, tomorrow, and always, we will remember 9/11." Thank you.
At this time, Dr. Hornick, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Hearing that there is no changes to the agenda, I would entertain a motion, please.
I make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, we will drop down to the consent agenda. And for the minutes and financial reports. Let me see those dates. I would entertain a motion to accept these, please.
I'll make that motion and we approve the minutes from June, or from the June 5th, June 22nd meeting and the August 2023 financial report and the monthly school nutrition report.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries. Now, the monthly operating bills?
I, to hedge my month, review those bills and I would like to make a motion that we approve that plumbing amount in the total of $5,740,426.14.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And I reviewed those as well with Mr. Jones. So I will second that motion and ask now, all in favor of that motion? Signifying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And then I will turn it over now to, I don't know if I'm, to Dr. Wolfrey? Or Dr. Hornick?
Yes, ma'am.
For recognition.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we'll have a series of recognition. We're going to start, I will start, and then we'll have Mr. Rutter will come forward. And then it'll be Dr. Wolfrey, Dr. Oliver Egert from Locust Grove Elementary School, and then Ms. Ailer bringing up the end. And so I'd like to start this evening. And we had meant to try to work this recognition in a few, a month or so ago. And so two very fine people are here this evening. And so if Ms. Deanne Marshall and Mr. John Locata, if you guys would stand and just make your way towards the Proud to be OC, and I will join you in a second. I'd just like to let everybody know. When, through the summer, the administration, we were trying to come up with different ideas, particularly in line with the strategic plan for recruiting and retention, and ways, and creative ways that we could attract new employees to Orange County Public Schools. And so through our discussions, we thought that it might be very helpful if we were able to somehow defray the cost, particularly to our youngest and newest teachers to the school division, ones who are coming from out of state, who have never previously held a license in Virginia. They have to pay $100 to the state. It is a state charge in order to get licensure. And so in late June, early July, at one of our Ed Foundation meetings, I brought the idea forward just to see if anybody'd be interested in ponying up some money. And these two fine folks here, it was out of an Ed Foundation meeting, but I want to make it clear that it was, the money was written from Mr. and Mrs. Marshall and Mr. Locata personally. So Mr. Locata donated $1,250. And he put that up and said, "Would somebody match it?" If I believe that's how it went down. And Ms. Marshall immediately said that I would match that $1,250. And so that $2,500 we now have, and we have been able to tell all of our new folks who are here and didn't have a license previously in Virginia, that we will walk them through the application process and they will not have to pay that money to the state. And this is particularly important for recent college grads. When they start with us, they're not getting their first paycheck until September the 28th. Correct, Yvonne? Is that the first one?
August 28th.
August 28th? Okay. And so they're, they're working through the month of August. They're starting with us, brand new, in late July. It was July 31st this year for New Teacher Institute. And then working through August. And then the first paycheck comes. So it's somewhat often difficult to come up with an extra $100. And so we would like, on behalf of the entire school division, as well as all of our new employees who were the benefactor of your generosity, we would like to recognize Ms. Deanne Marshall, Mr. Keith Marshall, and Mr. John Locata for their generosity.
Thank you, Dr. Hornick. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, I come before you to recognize Mr. Mike Schumake. Last Tuesday evening, Mike volunteered to work after hours at Orange Elementary School to assist Honeywell, our HVAC contractor, to install a new cooling tower fan motor. Mike single-handedly loaded the 250-pound motor up onto the roof, prepped the cooling tower for the new motor install. This work was vital to be completed on this evening so that we could have school the next day providing air and comfort to our staff and students at Orange Elementary. Mike and the Honeywell technician had to remove the old motor and lower the new motor into the tower over six feet down while spewing 100-plus degree air and steam above, working into the dark on one of the hottest evenings of the year. During Mike's tenure here, he has shown great work ethic, not only in the HVAC trade, but is willing to step up and help out others in trades, as well as from mowing to carpentry, plumbing, and roofing, to list a few. Thank you for allowing me to recognize him this evening.
You demand, Mike.
I know one teacher that's very pleased.
Yeah. And a principal.
Can I have one more second?
Sure.
What Mike did is admirable. What our maintenance team does, you might think we have a pretty large number of folks, but I think, Marshall, let the community know what we work with and the skill set they have.
Yes. I'm very blessed to have a team of 11 maintenance technicians in various trades. They handle all of our 10 buildings here, in addition to transportation. Mr. Marty Pitts is sitting with us this evening. He's one of my lead mechanics as well that rocks it every day. I couldn't do the job I'm doing without the support of the men. And they do a great job each and every day, going above and beyond. And I can't thank the board enough for giving me these positions to continue making Orange County Public Schools better and better every day.
Good evening. I have the honor of recognizing Ms. Sarah Hallam, the division's math and teacher development coordinator. As we prepared for this school year, Dr. Hornick set forth for us a new vision for new teacher orientation. This vision included increasing the amount of time for orientation and enhancing the experience for our new instructional staff. As the teacher development coordinator, Ms. Hallam was tasked with bringing this vision to fruition. Just as she consistently demonstrates through her daily work, Ms. Hallam exceeded expectations. Collaborating with other members of our team, every central office department and building leaders, Ms. Hallam designed the OC New Teacher Base Camp. The base camp provided our new teachers with an experience that balanced time at the school level with their principals and mentors, with time for training on curriculum instruction and assessment. This model provided our new teachers with essential time and the support to process and apply what they had learned and begin planning for the school year. Additionally, the new teachers had the opportunity to meet our school board members and to begin building relationships with central office staff, principals, mentors, lead teachers, and one another as they became acclimated to Orange County Public Schools. Some of the highlights of their week included sessions tailored to the teachers' experience levels and needs, professional development sessions led by our own OCPS teachers, a teacher social at Willow Grove, and a tour of Orange County, which was coordinated, excuse me, coordinated and provided by the Orange Historical Society. Thanks to Ms. Hallam's top-notch work, our new teachers were able to become familiar with their new community and colleagues, as well as our school system. Mrs. Hallam's work enabled new teachers to begin the year feeling confident and supported. Thank you for your diligent work and hard work designing and leading the New Teacher Base Camp, an outstanding induction into OCPS and a foundation for continued growth and support. Thank you for all your work.
This is my special guest speaker. So I'm Dr. Oliver Egert. I'm the principal at Locust Grove Elementary School. And this is Ms. Hanford. She is my self-contained special education teacher at the school. And Ms. Hanford started off the year on leave. I'll give you one guess why. And so we had a team that was working in her classroom that did an amazing job, working with some of our special needs students. Thank you. That is not my wheelhouse. We had some folks that did an amazing job in that classroom. I'm sorry, I had my back to you. And I just needed to be able to recognize the group of teachers and assistants that worked in that classroom. So if I could have the following folks come on up here, and then we'll head over to Dr. Hornick in a moment. Ms. Madison Pitts, Pamela Stuber, Kaitlin Glasby, Jennifer Plamp, and I have one team member, Ms. Susan Gresel, that was not able to be here this evening. So Ms. Pitts, in only her second year as a professional special education teacher, took over the role of Child Study Chair and our lead special education teacher in the building while Ms. Hanford was out on leave. And she did an amazing job. And you would never know that she was only in her second year. And so I'm, I'm super proud of what she's accomplished in her short time as a professional educator. And she was able to do the amazing things that Holly normally does in her absence. So thank you, Madison. My next two ladies, Ms. Stuber and Ms. Glasby, were brand new to the role this year. They were support staff in the special needs classroom. And you would have thought they were professionally trained for months before starting their role. They have natural innate abilities that make them the perfect fit for the kinds and needs in the classroom. And they've been amazing in their first month of school. So thank you so much for your work. And finally, Ms. Plamp has worked closest with Ms. Hanford for several years. She really took over the lead in the classroom as a support staff member in helping to have the schedules ready, making sure that IEPs were being fulfilled. And she really did an amazing job in collaboration with Ms. Gresel, who was the long-term substitute in the position as well. And it took all of these ladies to make the transition for our students wonderful and smooth. And it was been, it was a great start to the school year, even without Ms. Hanford. So it's a special group of folks. And I'm thankful for the opportunity to recognize them all.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you.
Good evening. I have the privilege, I'm first going to introduce Jessica Greddler. Jessica is one of our special education teachers. She's the lead special ed teacher at Prospect Heights Middle School. She's also the committee chair for TACO, which is the therapeutic adventure camp of Orange. And there's a small presentation. And then we have lots of amazing folks we'd like to recognize.
Ms. Byram, do you mind hitting the back button on that, please? It's going without me. Good evening. Tonight, I would like to share with you the 4H Therapeutic Adventure Camp of Orange, also known as TACO. My name is Jessica Greddler, and I have been volunteering with TACO for 15 years and serving as the committee chair for the last 11. Now it's not going.
Do you need to do the auto?
Yes. It was on auto. Oh, hit the play. There we go. There we go. I'm sorry. I have been volunteering with TACO for 15 years and serving as committee chair for the last 11 years. Our committee is composed of five volunteers, ranging from special education teachers to real estate agents, retirees, and administrative assistants. TACO has an over 40-year history in Orange County. We are a nonprofit with all funds being raised for our camp through fundraisers. TACO is open to all students ages nine to 19 with IEPs in Orange County. We can host up to 15 campers. Due to having multiple unfilled camper positions over numerous years, we have started accepting a few students from Madison County in order to share the benefits with TACO with as many children as we can. Camp is provided free of charge to all campers, in addition to transportation, thanks to Orange and Madison County Public Schools. In order for camp to run smoothly and efficiently, we require between 30 and 40 volunteers every year. Our camp is currently being held for one week at Jim McDonough Cutting Horses at Elmwood Farm. Jim graciously donates the use of his facility and his client horses with us for the week. I'd like to give you a glimpse of a day at TACO. When campers arrive, they are greeted in the tent by our wonderful volunteers. Campers have a breakfast snack supplied by TACO and participate in a morning song and welcome. After the morning welcome, campers split into three groups to visit our various stations. Each group is assigned one to two group leaders to help them navigate throughout their day. Station one consists of arts and crafts and is staffed by an adult volunteer and three to four youth volunteers. This year in arts and crafts, campers painted ceramic horses, made bead art, signed thank you cards, made fairy gardens, and our returning campers started a scrapbook to store their TACO memories in for years to come. Our second station is riding. When campers arrive in the ring, they are fitted with a helmet and belt and paired with a horse. Each camper is assigned a horse with a horse leader and minimum of two sidewalks. Sidewalking is a physically demanding job, and our goal is to have four sidewalks per horse to allow our sidewalkers to rotate out halfway through each group. While in the ring, campers are working on their balance, their ability to follow directions, steer their horse, all through many fun and engaging games. This year, the hit was musical cones on horseback. Our third station varies by day and ranges from horse education to science experiments, nature walks, recreation, bubble play, and bingo. Our station three is staffed with one leader and two to three youth volunteers. After campers have rotated through all three stations, we gather back together for an afternoon snack donated by a local church. Some days after snack, campers participate in entertainment such as the Little Magic Miniature Ponies from Culpeper, the Orange Volunteer Fire Company fire truck visits, and the Orange County Sheriff's Office K-9. Other days, campers participate in recreation or bubble play during this time. On the last day of camp, we host a horse show and we invite all of our parents, families, Orange County school employees, case managers, and administrators, along with numerous other community members to join us and support their campers in their horse show. The campers absolutely love having an audience to show off their skills that they have learned. In 2022, we introduced an award ceremony at the conclusion of camp, awarding volunteers with Years of Service awards for three, five, 10, 12, 15, and 18 years. We also introduced our first annual Joseph Shiflett Memorial Award in memory of past camper Joseph Shiflett, who sadly passed away. This award is given to a camper who has the same qualities as Joe. We also introduced the first annual Susan Hanner and Sally Barber Memorial Awards in memory of our two past committee members who passed away. These awards were presented to two volunteers who show the qualities of Susan and Sally. We are proud to say, in the two years of presenting these awards, all four award recipients have been current or previous Orange County Public School students. I appreciate you inviting us here tonight to recognize our current volunteers and learn a bit about TACO. We greatly appreciate your support and we look forward to you learning more about camp. I invite you to find us on Facebook under 4H Therapeutic Adventure Camp of Orange. Look at some more of our photos and some of our testimonials from our campers and volunteers. I also invite you to join us at camp next year and see what a rewarding experience this is, not only for our campers, but for our amazing volunteers. In closing, I'd like to leave you with this statement our committee developed. "We have the cause, you have the effect, we all have the heart." At this time, we would like to recognize the following Orange County Public Schools teachers and students that volunteer with TACO.
You're the first one.
Oh, okay. Jessica Greddler. Megan Ellinger. Do you want them to come stand up here?
Yeah. They'll come up here and then...
Yep. You can come up here and then we'll go to the front. Kathy Corker. Amber Thomas. Samantha Berryman. Melissa Martin. Amaya Stenny. Jeremiah Stenny. Ella Freeman. Cheyenne Henderson. Charlie Patera. Doug Patera. Tara Martin. Cade Altman. Abigail Hendry. Jamison Hurt. And Karis Miracle.
And I just want to thank everyone again for our parent and student volunteers, but also to Jessica, the hundreds of hours that she has put into TACO, making it such a special experience for our students and our families. It's unfathomable. And I, it's one of the best days or weeks of the whole year for these students. And I just thank everyone for your dedication and your heart for our kids. Thank you.
Susan, I'd like to say I've known Jessica all of her life. And she's always had a great love for kids. And she started this program because she loved kids. And she had a precious little girl of her own who I think soon will be three? Am I correct? Two? And she takes that precious girl with her. But also, somebody's here that should be recognized as well. And that is her mother, Patty Harlow. Jessica, so proud of you. Jessica, so proud of you.
Congratulations to all of our recipients and to all the folks who submitted names. To recognize Madam Chair, Members of the Board, thank you for your support, and that is all this evening for our recognition.
And I tell you what, why don't we do a second and just let people that want to leave, leave? And then we will get into public comment. Go ahead, yeah. Getting a break for a second, Ms. Anderson had to step out, and we'll start it Susan, she returns.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Just for the sense of time, I was wondering if it would be agreeable with you to allow Ms. Carr and our FFA folks to come and present their field trip requests quickly here before we hop into public comment, and so we can allow them to carry on. So if you all agreeable, we'd love to have our amazing FFA folks come forward.
Awesome. Hi, guys, I'm Kelly Carr. I am one of the three FFA advisors and ag teachers that we have here in Orange County. We are proposing the trip to the 96th National FFA Convention. So I have here half of my officer team. The FFA Convention is held in Indianapolis, Indiana. It's a great opportunity for these kids to go out and meet, network, have different career opportunities, and really get to be a part of FFA at the national level. So I don't know what else. We're heading to Indiana the end of October. We're staying there for a few nights. Officer's team is going, we're taking five youth, two adults, and we're driving many vans from here to Indiana. So I don't know what other questions you have, but I'm happy to answer. I'm sorry.
Anybody attend last year?
Yes.
I did, and myself.
And they came back with award winners, if I remember correctly.
That was Quarter Horse Claws.
Okay, okay.
Yes, so they will just be participating at this event. So, yep, they will not be competing.
So I think all the information was presented in the board packet to board members so they could review before this. So I would just like to say thank you and congratulations to you guys, how proud we are, and as a board, we stand behind you guys and appreciate you, even though there's a lot of people in the community that don't know who you are and what you do and where you're at, but we do, we acknowledge that, and we appreciate you. So I thank you. And so with that, if there are no questions, I would like to make the motion to accept this field trip. Any second.
I'll make that motion that we approve the FFA of Orange to go to the 96th Annual Convention in Indianapolis.
Okay, and I'll second it. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so now, at this time, I will open public comment. And Mrs. Byram, has anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we have 12 speakers tonight.
Okay.
And I will call them up three at a time. So the first three are Susan Boston, La Antoinella Spiller Reddick, and Shoshana Long.
School board members, Dr. Horneck, other faculty and fellow community members. I'm Susan Boston. I'm an Orange County resident. I've been a resident since 1994, and I am invested in the health of and mental health well-being of myself and my community. I am speaking on behalf of about 20 other friends and people in the community who are interested in their health as well, especially some tennis enthusiasts, walkers, and runners. My... In 1996, the gym was open to the public outside of school hours. People enjoyed the use of indoor track, weights, racquetball, basketball, and tennis, especially during inclement weather until March of 13th, 2020, due to COVID. For a brief time, as we sorted out COVID-19 life, completely expected. As a pediatric nurse, taking care of the same children that walked through these hallways for the past 22 years, I believe at this time, there is no medical reason to limit the access to the public. And what I am requesting of you is to consider public access to the field house for continued or return use of the, to be reinstated, for us to be able to use the indoor track, the tennis courts for inclement weather. Due to the inaccessibility, some of the community members weren't able to maintain their usual exercise routines. Sometimes people lost their agility, as well as an important social outlet, which is very needed, including some people who came to use their walker on the smooth surface of that indoor court, that indoor track. And that has been not available to them over the past, like I said, three years. I'm asking that you request that you allow the community an informal individual open gym access. From the concept phase of the field house until its completion, it was put forth as an expense, an investment to the community for the community. And I ask that you don't prohibit the use of the facilities that our taxpayers, our tax dollars continue to fund. Can we work together toward a reasonable use plan? That's what I'm asking. In 2022, I spoke with A.D. Neely, once the school was no longer virtual, and was politely informed that the school board wouldn't at that time allow use by the public. This August, I've reached out to A.D. Stone, and while I did receive information regarding the use of outdoor courts and track, as of our August 17th email, we are still awaiting an answer from central office regarding the public use. Therefore, I am before you, asking that you would consider that use. Thank you for your attention, your consideration in helping support the health and well-being of Orange County citizens of all ages.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Hello, Dr. Horneck, school board members, Ms. Byram. I've had the pleasure of speaking with each of you and working closely with most of you, especially during our strategic planning process. My name is La Antoinella Spiller Reddick. I'm a wife, a mother, business owner, and somewhat I try to be active in my community. We actually left Fredericksburg City purposefully and relocated to Locust Grove in 2017. My daughter began kindergarten here in Orange County. She's now in the sixth grade. As part of the PTA Parent Advisory Committee, I've tried to be somewhat as much as possible aware and as active as possible in what's going on with our public school system here. And overall, I'm happy to say that I've been pleased, satisfied, and many times pleasantly surprised with our school system. My hat goes off to our teachers, our principals, especially at Locust Grove Primary and Locust Grove Elementary. I can't say much about middle school just yet, because my daughter's new there, but I really, really am grateful for those who have had direct day-to-day impact on the education of my daughter. And for that, I'm optimistic, and I would like to remain that way. When participating in the strategic plan for OCPS, spearheaded by our Dr. Horneck, we spent three days with almost 30 community members candidly discussing what we believe to be in the best interest of our children. Even with all of our differing politics, some more obvious than others, and our differing opinions on what certain words meant or what phrases might be lightning rods to some and triggering to others, we all seem to agree on one thing. We love our children, and we require the best for our children, all of our children. I hope that as we edge nearer to election season, we don't forget this. I was prompted to speak up today after having watched a recording of one of our prior school board meetings, sorry, couldn't make it. I saw some things that were a little concerning to me, but in the end, our strategic plan was approved. Kudos to y'all. Thank you for that. Tonight, I really stand here to say this. I believe that in my heart of hearts, we all have more in common than what sets us apart. The majority of our community are not extreme left or extreme right. I believe we are just regular people who love our children and want the best for them. Can we please, 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 please focus on that? Meeting the needs of each individual student, consider what we have in common while also embracing what may make us different. Learn from each other, listen to each other, and remember, life is a present, tomorrow's not guaranteed. And with that, if you give me a little grace, I would like to read the mission of Orange County Public Schools as it exists in our current strategic plan. The mission of the Orange County Public Schools, a unified community and premier school system, is to promote a legacy of excellence by empowering all students to maximize extraordinary opportunities through rigorous, engaging, and real-world learning experiences led by high-quality educators, invested families, and supportive community partners. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Shoshana Long. I'm a parent of an OCH High School student, and I'm here to address my concerns about the tarp around the football field. For one, I don't think it's right, because we've been all these many years, and there's been no tarp around the field. It's been, people have been able to sit outside and watch the games, or just go inside and watch the game. With the tarp, for one, your field is not handicap accessible to block it off. You don't have wheelchair access. If you have a wheelchair, there's gravel. It's hard to use the gravel, the wheelchair and a walker on the gravel. And most of the supporters for the high school game are the seniors. So you have taken a privilege that most of the seniors like on Friday nights, to come and sit outside a game and support the children. Some of the seniors can't walk, and they sit in their cars, because, you know, at this time of year, the football games are really cold. So that means they sit in their car to watch the game. You know, if it's a family member, they're out there to support the family member to keep so that they can watch the game. But as a parent, I don't think the tarp is right to put it around the football field. And it's just this year. Why? I don't think it's right. And I ask the school board to look into it, to find out what can be done, if it can be taken down, or some kind of access. So that's all. I thank you for your time.
The next three speakers are Gary McFadden, Mike Simmons, and Abby Simmons.
Dr. Horneck, thank you for proactively addressing the K through 12 modeled school policies, and specifically Policy JBB, which addresses privacy and parental notification. Many support your efforts. In the past, when the issue of supporting a parent's rights to be informed of their child's physical, mental, and emotional health was discussed, public comments sometimes turned into personal remarks. A chief rhetorical argument for opposing such rights was based on anecdotal evidence, based on the transition or die argument. Instead, the question I have is, would it not be more reasonable to give greater weight and credence to the academic findings of recent medical studies? In a study published in the June 27th, 2023 edition of the Journal of American Medical Association, researchers at the Danish Research Institute for Suicide Prevention found that suicide risks actually increased among transgender people after their surgical transition. It is worth noting that Denmark is already considered one of the most transgender-friendly countries in the world. The study found that persons with transsexualism after sex reassignment have higher risk for morbidity, suicidal behavior, and psychiatric morbidity than the general population. In a similar Swedish study, researchers claimed, "Our findings suggest that sex reassignment, although alleviating gender dysphoria, may not suffice as treatment for transsexualism and should inspire improved psychiatric and somatic care after sex reassignment for this patient group." Gender dysphoria is a mental health issue, and it should be treated compassionately. Emotionally troubled minors seldom know what is best to improve their mental health. There is no other area of medicine where doctors will surgically remove a perfectly healthy body part, thereby intentionally inducing a diseased state, a pituitary gland malfunction, based simply on the young adolescent patient's wishes. The Journal of American Study comes as more people who transitioned at a youthful age have publicly said that they regret mutilating their otherwise healthy bodies, and that their underlying mental health problems have not been cured, and that they have sometimes been worsened by medical transition. The argument claiming that informing parents of their child's physical, mental, and emotional health will increase transgender suicides is factually inaccurate.
Good evening, board. Abby wasn't able to make it. She had a dental procedure where she couldn't talk, but I have her comments via text, if that's okay, if I could read those.
Okay.
Good evening, the board. I'm Mike Simmons. I'm not at Orange County, like, growing up here. I'm a military member. We moved into Orange County in 2017. My kids have pretty much... My kids have pretty much been in middle school and high school in the district, so we're pretty grounded in the district. That being said, I'm coming to talk today regarding the dress code policy. You know, I can say this because I grew up Baptist in South Alabama. It's a lot like the Baptist church. We do things because we've always done it that way, and that's the way we're going to continue to do it. And that's kind of the mentality I've got over the last couple of years with the dress code, particularly at Prospect Middle. It seems like the administration at Prospect are more concerned with dress code violations than they are academics. A little bit about my background: I'm an active Army officer, currently Inspector General, and I also teach online for Columbia Southern as a professor of Homeland Security. So I have an academic background, and I have a standards background. To me, it's just plain wrong to pull a student out of class and send them to the office because they have rip-sener jeans. I brought a pair of my daughter's jeans that got dress coded. I would ask, like, each one of y'all to look at these jeans and tell me what's inappropriate about these jeans.
The hole there's too high.
The issue is, and I have a comment about that: Is this a sexualized hole right here? Why is that not appropriate? I understand old-fashioned rip-sener jeans, no go, right? Let me give you an example. I walk into Google, Amazon, or Tesla or Space, dressed like this. A twenty-one-year-old kid straight out of college that's dressed like that, that has a lot of innovative ideas, who do you think's going to get the job? Not me. It won't be me. Times have changed. So it's time for the school district to realize that rip-sener jeans, that are not inappropriate, and I'm not advocating for inappropriateness, but thigh rips here that are small, that don't show anything, it's not worth taking a child out of class to send to the office to wait for the parent to bring them another set of clothes. Ironically, she wasn't here tonight. In the tints of ambiguity, I won't name the name, but one of the taco recipient volunteers, her daughter got dress coded, because my wife was in the office at the same time. Her daughter got dress coded because she was wearing leggings and they were full of pity. Yet, not inappropriate, not see-through, it's just the way the policy's currently written. So that concludes my comments. So now I'm going to read my daughter's comments. This was a middle school issue, hers is a high school issue, and also the AB schedule. So I'll just read her comments real quick. I haven't had a chance to filter these. They're appropriate, but they're not worded how I would word them. All right, so this is my daughter's words. "Reason I think girls should be allowed to wear shorts that aren't fingertip-length: One, nothing about legs are distracting, and as long as butts are not hanging out of, they should be fine. Two, it's very hard for girls to find shorts that are not fingertip-length, especially tall girls, and if you do not find some, they probably don't look cute, and people will make fun of you because it's hot outside and most girls don't even risk wearing shorts in fear of getting dress coded since it's extremely hard to find cute shorts that are fingertip-length, and staff may not think it's important how you look, but all the kids in the school do, and you will probably get made fun of because of it." The next one. "Reason I think girls should be allowed to wear," oh, sorry, that's that one. "Reason I think," actually, I missed one, my apologies. I pulled these over from text. The next one's pajama pants, and ironically, today was a pajama pants day at the high school. So the reason I think we should be able to wear pajama pants is, number one, I don't feel about other kids do, but I can assume a lot of them are like me, and I tend to work better when I feel comfortable and allowed to wear things that make me feel comfortable. The pajama pants are not harmful or affecting anyone else, and they're very modest. And the last thing I got is on the AB schedule idea for next year. "The reason we should not change to an AB day schedule," I have thought about this since I found out that we're going to converting to this next year, and I cannot think of one pro that comes from it. Kids are going to be more stressed out, work more, working a lot more time right now that can barely keep up with having four classes and making them feel overwhelmed, so I can imagine eight. I learn better when I'm not focusing on a little, when I'm focused on a little at a time. Having two core classes each semester allows me to do more than I can without having all the extra stress." So that concludes that one. So what she's advocating there is, I guess, there's a motion to switch to an AB schedule and shorten the classes and have like eight classes all year long. So what she's advocating for is to keep the current schedule, even though they're longer classes, there are only four classes at a term. So what that means is you'll have math and science, you can split those up and have two electives. The new schedule advocates for having all the eight classes you have in one academic year all year long. So it's kind of like the old way it used to be. So her perspective is, it's less stressful and she can concentrate more by having only four classes per term instead of all eight all year. So, subject to any questions or comments, that's kind of all I had. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate your service to the community.
The next three speakers are Dwight Pascal, Darlene Dawson, and Emily Potts.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Horneck. My name is Dwight Pascal. I am a retired forty-year teacher and coach in the Orange County school system, and I greatly enjoyed my career, and I thank you for that career. I liked every minute of it, just a sidebar. Shortly after the Hornets Sports Center opened in 1996, the Orange County High School Athletic Department employed a part-time person to open the facility from five to eight AM in the morning, Monday through Friday, so that the public individuals could walk on the indoor track, use the weight room, play tennis, play basketball, or participate in any other activity that could be provided in the field house. There was no fee charged for walking. Other participants, if they used some equipment, they had to pay a dollar. It was inexpensive. A similar opening of the field house to the public occurred in the evening after OCHS athletic teams' practice sessions. It was not open fully when OCHS game competitions were being held. This opening was supervised by another OCHS Athletic Department part-time employee. It is my understanding, when the Hornets Sports Center was built in the mid-1990s, that the Board of Supervisors provided some money for its construction. With that funding, there was an agreement that the school would use the field house for its activities, and when the school was not using the facility, it would be open to the public. In March of 2020, during the COVID-19 pandemic, the facility was closed, and since that time, it has not been made available to the public. It is our desire, and I'm talking about these twenty people that Ms. Boston was also referring to, and probably it's more than that, to reopen the Hornets Sports Center for people who want to use it in the morning, as well as other times when the school is not using it. This would be keeping the agreement that the Board of Supervisors intended for the Hornets Sports Center. Thank you so much for listening to my comments.
Good evening. My name is Darlene Dawson, and I'm speaking tonight to ask the board not to adopt the model policies on ensuring privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents in Virginia's public schools. The 2023 policies state that they are a guidance document issued pursuant to the Code of Virginia, and that each school board shall adopt policies that are consistent with them, and I contend that our current laws and policies that we already have in place are consistent already with this document. You did not adopt the 2021 version, and I see no good reason to adopt this one now. While this model policy does have a lot of positive aspects that I appreciate, I'm very concerned about one particular clause that's found in the final paragraph of Section 2, Part C, which says, "If law requires the school to permit a child to use a facility with students of the opposite sex, parents should be given the right to opt their child out of using such facilities, and the child should be given access to alternative facilities." So that kicks my teacher brain into gear, and I start thinking about where the rubber hits the road on that, the practicality of doing that. The devil's always in the details. So how are students and parents going to be informed of this particular situation without violating privacy law? How will teachers know which students are supposed to be going into bathrooms together or not? How will we accommodate potential multiple opt-outs since those could be the majority of our student population? Why would we not provide these alternative facilities for those experiencing the gender dysphoria rather than the other way around? It seems to me it could create an administrative nightmare and a protected class of students, which would be illegal. The guiding principles of the policy state that schools should respect all students. That's already policy. There are five more principles that all have to do with parental rights, already policy. Fundamental rights recognized from the U.S. Constitution to the Supreme Court to Virginia law to case law and not granted by government in the first place. Our parental rights do not come from government. There are eighteen references in that document to law, again, from the U.S. Constitution, the Virginia Constitution, Title VII, Title IX, Title II, which is American with Disabilities Act, and that covers gender dysphoria. And I don't have time to read them all, of course, but I'm going to highlight especially the last one, the eighteenth one, is where school personnel are already mandatory reporters. So if we see that a child is at risk of suicide or parental neglect or abuse, we already have a law in place to report that. We don't need another policy. There's nothing we can add to what's already in place. We just need to follow the law. Thank you.
Hello. You know me. I don't have to explain who I am. You all know me. Hi. So I've been thinking about a few things that I wanted to talk about today, and a few of them have come up, and I'm going to let them go because you've already heard about them. I'm going to talk to you about what I saw on Saturday at the street festival. Obviously, some of you guys saw me out there with Culpeper Pride, which is perfectly fine. I had four students come up to me and say, "Thank you for being here." Wow. "Thank you for being here." And my answer was, "Of course, that's what I do. I'm here for you." And their answer was, "Seeing you here shows that there are people in this county that are affirming, that are cool, that are allies." There are allies, and then there are people that don't like us. And the people that don't like us think that we're bad. We're bad people. We're not. Transgender people are good people. For a second there, I thought that was for me. The trans people are not bad. We're not trying to hurt anyone. We're just trying to live our lives just like you are. One of the students said to me that they would really love to be able to have a name in school that they would be called by. They can't be because of the fact that if they do, their teacher will have to tell their parent about it, and their parents will not accept that, and they will be kicked out of their house. That's not cool. You don't want homeless kids coming in Orange County because of the fact that you passed these resolutions. It's not cool. If you do it to one kid, that, if you do it to the transgender kid where you have to do their, use their name, what's on their birth certificate, what happens to Michael who doesn't want to go by Michael, he wants to go by John? Or Michael that wants to go by Mike? You know what? You can't do it. You have to go by Michael. One kid, you have to treat all of them the same exact way. And that was the biggest thing that really came up in my, in my looking at those beside the bathroom policy, was the name. If you can't call one kid, if you want to, if Michael, if KJ, Kelsey Ray, my kid, is KJ, you can't call KJ by the, by those unless I approve it. Well, if I'm not approving of it, then, you know, it's not cool. And again, if Michael wants to become Michael, Mike, you can't do it. So, you know, I know. My time's up.
The next three speakers are KJ Potts, Alan Daniel, and Laura Daniel.
Good. Good evening, Dr. Horneck and members of the board. You just heard my mom. It's stupid that you guys are trying to get the...
Well, okay then.
The teachers to call them by their, what's on their birth certificate instead of the name that they want to be called, that is just rude. And you guys want everyone to be your definition of normal, but really and honestly, there is no normal. If every kid was the same, it would, life would be boring. That's, like, that's the gist of it. If every kid is the same, I like kids that are different, doesn't matter gay, straight, bi, anything, black, white, anything. Why does it matter? So I don't think you guys should pass the, any, anything at all thing.
Evening, Superintendent and school board. I wanted to come and speak to you today about the parental notification draft policies. They were presented at the August 21 meeting and state my opposition to the policy. Starting off on page one, the policy claims are made that Orange County Public School complies with all applicable federal and state nondiscrimination laws, including Title 10 and the Human Rights Act. This is kind of an interesting way to start off a policy that will discriminate and be in contrast to anti-discrimination laws. Both of those laws list sexual orientation, gender identity, and protected class, and as a protected class, and specifically states that they include protections against discrimination in education institutions. In 1969, in Tinker versus Des Moines, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that students do not lose their rights at the steps of the public school. Our students retain their constitutional rights in school. This policy, like the ones before, are in opposition to well-established laws and will be struck down. I also want to ask, what problem is this policy addressing? What is the issue, what issue is it fixing? Reading through the policy on C2, where it states, and I quote, "Where federal laws require schools to prevent transgender students to share otherwise sex segregated facilities with students of the opposite sex, parents should be given the right to opt their child out of using such facilities that promote the child's privacy and safety," unquote. Remembering back to the mask discussions, I was specifically told that neither my child nor I could ask for my child to sit away from another child in a classroom who chose to be maskless because that would be bullying. How is this provision under C2 not also bullying then? Staying with Section C2, whose safety is in concern with that section? Let me ask the administration, how many instances of sexual assault, rape, assault, and physical bullying has happened in Orange County public schools? How many of those instances took place in the bathroom or locker room? How many of those were, where a transgender student were using the facility based upon their gender and was attacked and not, and was the attacker and not a cisgendered individual attacking a transgender or non-binary student? I would suspect the number to be rather low. From Section D, is Orange County planning to leave the VHSL? The school board has no jurisdiction nor ability to enforce sports through the VHSL. The VHSL has the, they're in control of that. The VHSL has the, they're in control of that. If we leave the Virginia High School League, that will be an interesting sports year as we will no longer be playing other high schools. We would be dropped off the radar of any college scouts' sports as they could not gauge our competition, if we had any. OC wants to be seen as supporting their students, but this policy is not the way. I urge the board to say no to this policy. At best, this policy invites discrimination in our school. At worst, it requires discrimination and bullying with forced outing and other requirements listed in the policy.
Please bear with me as I have a lot I want to get through. First, the model policies. I support option three. Dr. Horneck stated option three was to do nothing since our policies already are in compliance. Anything more than that is attack against our LGBTQ+ community. And come on, please quit the argument about surgery. No one's talking about surgery in school. Kids are just trying to live their authentic self. Let's just support them. Second, more advanced classes, especially in the middle school. I would love the middle school to get back to having more than just one algebra class and at least one full geometry class. Perhaps instead of gatekeeping our advanced classes, you stop handpicking classes and kids and allow kids and families to sign up for what's appropriate for them. If they make the wrong choice, then the school can reevaluate that choice with the families. Honestly, I'm tired of finding the school system to push our kids academically. It's ridiculous. Third, the middle school dance from 2:30 to 4:30. Seriously? This isn't elementary school kids. An LGMS is a different demographics than other parts of the county and something that should be considered. What may work for an elementary school kid isn't necessarily going to work for the middle school or high school. Heck, most parents aren't even off work by 4:30. So I hope the eighth grade formal isn't the same time as that would be a huge disappointment to kids and families. And please, why don't you just survey the families in your school so that they can find what's appropriate for them? And then that school can make the choice that fits its community. Fourth, can we please talk about lunch visitors? Tell me why, as a parent, I can't go have lunch with my kids. It's absolutely absurd. I technically can go in and observe the classroom, but I can't go have lunch with my kids? So the principal posted in the Locust Grove Middle School that lunch visitors are not allowed. When I questioned him at the meet and greet, it was explained to me that this was a countywide policy. It was discussed about how families would take pictures with other kids present and post it online. If that's an issue, then deal with it specifically, but don't tell me I can't have lunch with my kid. I went and looked through each of the school student handbooks for the other schools trying to reference this. Half of the student handbooks for our schools are not posted. Finding the ones that are posted are extremely difficult, which also goes to our website. It's not user-friendly, no offense, Ms. Byram. Another few that are posted, half of them are outdated. Only one posted in the handbook that lunch visitors were welcome and it was an elementary school kid. Ironically, doesn't that contradict what your guest speaker stated at convocation? So please, you say you want to be parent and family friendly, then why so many actions are you taking that is against that? And how in the world is this a countywide policy that I can't go support my kid in an unacademic time? Please, somebody explain it to me. So like I said, very few, less than half. So please do better, Orange, and please, for once, actually listen to what I'm saying. Thank you for waking up, Mr. Hopkins. Thanks.
Ms. Byram, is that conclude all our speakers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, I will declare public comment closed, and we will continue with business. Dr. Horneck, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, we will go to letter B, since we addressed our FFA field trip, and Mr. Rutter is here from previous presentation from our August meeting regarding proposed revisions to facility use fees.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before you again, this evening is the consideration for the proposed updated fee schedule for this facility use request. I believe you've received the copy that you requested at the last board meeting that showed the surrounding counties and their current fee schedules. If you have any questions or comments, I'm ready to help.
I do have a question. So as far as the Hornet Sports Center...
Yes.
Is there some type of, could we create some type of contract if they decide to do for a certain period of time, possibly giving them some type of discount if they sign on to so many days that we know they're going to be there? Some type of price discount or something along those lines specifically for the Hornet Sports Center?
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson, for that question. I don't mind reaching out to Mr. Price, of course, the principal, as well as Ms. Stone, the A.D., talking with Dr. Horneck, and we can reach out to the folks that have asked that request, and we can review that further. It would be better to answer that question once we knew the actual schedule of the events. I know that currently the Field House has a lot of evening activities, and then it comes into, one of the guest speakers or one of the public comments was asking about a part-time person. Of course, there is a evening custodian that works at the Field House. However, in the morning time, I don't believe that could be accommodated due to the time that the kids enter the school and allowing the public in the building when you have so many classrooms in the Field House that are used for instruction, you're having the community in with students, which is prohibited.
I'll just add a thought that I had particularly as we've been going through this is perhaps a better way to go is to work a little bit more closely with Parks and Rec and see if they'd be willing to sponsor and engage with us with some of the, particularly some of the information that was brought forward this evening to see if there can be a happy medium to work this. We want to make sure that we are understanding and considerate of the public and what is being brought forward, but also making sure that we're protecting the investment. And we also have to make sure that, quite frankly, we have to make sure we're covering the cost that it takes to run the building. So those are key considerations. But, you know, when you talk about insurance and other things, Parks and Rec already has that included. So maybe they'd be willing to work with us to sponsor some programs and to help with a partnership to find a happy medium on both ends, just as a thought.
That's a great point, Dr. Horneck. We can work with Matthew Hoddle, talk with him and Tim Mubrak.
And they also have, of course, they have access to additional staff members as well who may be able to assist. So just a thought as I was sitting here.
And just to add to that, Mrs. Anderson, the Parks and Rec does not pay any fees.
And back in the day, Mr. Morris would go in and open the doors early in the morning for everyone, and he volunteered and did it. So it wasn't a paid position. I mean, he did it till I think he was old, his health prohibited him from doing it. And then, of course, now things have changed where we have kids in the building so much earlier than we used to back in the day when people would go and do it. So it's been a lot of moving pieces there, and so I think it's wise to see if we can partner with the Parks and Rec and see what they could do. Maybe they have somebody on staff that's willing that could do it and take responsibility of that building, you know.
Yes. I think a key consideration that we have to have, and Marshall, I'm not sure if you spoke to this, particularly in the eastern end, particularly Locust Grove Middle School, we have groups right now from Spotsylvania that they're not going to bother renting their own building because they're, we're offering it at pennies on the dollar and not covering our cost, which is not an efficient way to move forward. So...
That's correct, Dr. Horneck. And if you look at the fee schedule that I provided to you, Spotsylvania County has a minimum use fee of $300 a day per, just a flat fee on top of what the area that they're asking for.
Yep. So, folks, this is an actionable item, so...
We had two speakers that talked about using the Field House here and how it was done in the past. I don't see this schedule as being in conflict with that. I see that as something that the school system set up and provided to the community. But in other words, I want to support this here, but I'm not saying that I'm opposed to what was been done for years in this county. I'd like to, I'd like to get back to that.
And Mr. Hopkins, Dr. Horneck, Mr. Honnaker, Ms. Stone and I, we are wanting to work with the community and help those organizations that use our facilities at no fee. It's our outside organizations that are, we're in the red, would turn it on our lights and our air conditioners at our current fee schedule. So this proposed fee schedule doesn't hurt the folks that are getting free use of the buildings, which are the Orange County Parks and Rec Department, the Orange Organizations, and also the organizations that provide back to the students.
So would anybody entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I got a question. Just with our speakers today, what would, what would really change? I don't understand if it was done then. Well, the big nugget is, is the fact that we don't have the space. Space limitations have pushed kids into, classes into the Field House. So that's the big change. And I guess, unless I'm missing something else, and another thing, we approved a solar program that was supposed to save a lot of money and over a long haul, but I hate to see taxpayers that were given a promise. But nothing's free. That's the bottom line. But there has to be a happy medium.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
Do we have to approve this tonight? Can we do more research to understand more of what's...
We can do more research, yes, sir, and we can spend more time talking offline about it.
Yeah, I think coming up with some proposals for, you know, that specific situation, I think would be great, talking with Parks and Recs and trying to come up with solutions before we approve this schedule.
Yes, ma'am.
The key to understand, though, is the request that we have coming in that we are holding. I mean, because until we have something new, our current fee structure is in place, and so we will, we continue to devolve into the red. That's the hangup, or we just tell people, continue to tell them, no, our buildings aren't for rent, which is what we've done right now. We're in a holding pattern.
That's correct. So... And Mrs. Anderson and Mr. Jones, this evening's requests would not apply to any, it would not affect the fee, they would not be under the fee schedule. If under the Parks and Rec that Mr., I'm sorry, that Dr. Horneck presented.
So can I suggest that we keep those people in a holding position then till we do more research?
Yep.
And I guess my overarching question would be safety of our kids.
Very good. Very good point, Ms. Page.
I mean, I'm not opposed to the public using it by no means. I mean, it was grand in the day when Mr. Morris could go open the door and let everybody walk. It was wonderful. But now, my overall concern is when we've got kids around campus and we've got kids coming and going, what does, what does that look like with kids as a safety issue?
Yes, ma'am. The morning, the morning use of the Field House with our current schedule of the high school, I don't believe would work out.
I still see that that's an issue that we need to talk about, but this issue, if I really understand what I heard from the superintendent, this issue that we're trying to really solve is not in the town of Orange, it's in the other end of the county. Did I hear that?
That is where we get the vast majority of our building usage rental requests.
That is correct, Dr. Horneck and Mr. Hopkins. A majority, I would say probably 75% of our facility use requests is from Locust Grove Middle, Locust Grove Primary, and Locust Grove Elementary.
So, I mean, I made it very clear, I'm for the public use in this Field House like it has been done in the past, if we can accommodate it. But I'm also wanting to solve a problem down in one of our schools in my district that is having a major problem, and so therefore I would support this, but I'm making it very clear that I'm not saying we're closing people out of the Field House here.
I would agree with Jim's statement.
So then, would somebody like to make the motion to accept this fee usage then?
Yes, I make a motion to reapprove this fee usage fee.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it with the representation that we will not limit the public here in the town of Orange to the Hornet Center.
For the Field House use.
Correct.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. All good with this by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Does it pose? All right.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate that. We will, the next step now that this is approved, we will bring forward to you a new facility use agreement for your review and approval as well. At this time, Ms. Blair will come forward to provide an update on the summer food service program and her report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Horneck, it's my pleasure to present information about our summer food service program. We had all of our summer programs in the, all the schools that had summer school in June had open sites, open to the families during our summer school hours. Families came to have breakfast and lunch if they chose, and all of the kids in summer school ate breakfast and lunch every day for free. Also, in July, we continued that open site here at the Teak Building where families were able to come for breakfast and lunch. We served fresh fruits and fresh vegetables every day. The children enjoyed freshly prepared meals by trained managers who were at every, every It was a little bit less than the year before, and I think that's because there weren't quite as many kids in summer school. We get most of our summer business from summer school, Boys and Girls Club, and Head Start classes. We also serve other parts of the community, such as the ASI and also the group that goes over to the college. I can't remember them now. Oh, that's the ASI, and the EHS, Early Head Start. I'm looking at all my acronyms. So we did a lot of outreach as we do normally, but this year we had a better presence on Facebook, thanks to Ellen. She's already gone today, but we really appreciate that. And we put out banners. You might have seen the big banner at the stoplight. So we do that, we try to do that every year, and also put signs out at all the schools to try to get the word out to the families. We look forward to doing this again next year. Any questions?
Just thank you. You do an amazing job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Appreciate it. At this time, we will bring Mr. Arnold forward, and he has some information regarding our architectural and engineering services contract with HDH, if I remember correctly. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Horneck. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Back in November of 2021, the school board approved the award of contract for general architectural and engineering services, et cetera, to HDH Architects for the period of October 1st, 2021, through September 30th of 2022, with the option for annual renewal for up to four additional years. At this time, we would like to recommend the renewal of the current contract, which will enable HDH to complete the design of the proposed roof replacement at Gordon Barber, which is well underway, as well as any other small roofing projects that could be incorporated without exceeding a total cost of $100,000 for the year. The Division has been very satisfied with the performance of HDH on previous and current projects, including the metal roof installation at the Field House, as well as the new EPDM roof, which is substantially completed at Unionville and ready for solar panels. Please note that in previous years, the administration has recommended more than one contract, but in this case, we only see the need for... one contract, but in this case, we only see the need for the one for the current year. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we get a copy of the contract since it was a few years ago? Can we get, can we see that?
Sure. It's a public record.
Okay. And then, what is the, so the proposed roof replacement of Gordon Barber was not in the original contract? Or was it, I'm just trying to understand how that wasn't completed with the original contract?
That project is under contract now. However, they're not done with the work, and if we terminate the contract at the end of this month, then they won't be able to complete it.
Okay. So they weren't, they're not held to completion on the contract? It was just to the certain amount of time?
No, it's for the dollar amount for the year.
Okay.
And extending it enables us to continue that and to completion.
So we've already utilized all the money from the original contract?
No, we have not. We're running out of time, not money.
Okay. So we just need to extend the contract based off of the original contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. And then finally, this is just for the board's information. We have begun to roll some extreme and some weather guidelines out to our schools, in line with some of the work in our strategic plan, particularly in the realm of safe and secure learning environment. And so we have set forth, and these will, these protocols, these guidelines are primarily to help guide our decision for athletic and activity events after school. However, we are going to use many of the same guiding principles, particularly when it comes to heat-related events with us monitoring either a wet bulb or a, a global wet bulb device, establishing some parameters as far as water intake and recommendations. If you scroll down maybe the following page. So in this document, we address our lightning procedures, how we want to prevent issues with cold weather, as well as preventing heat-related illness, if you scroll down to the bottom. And we are, have been, particularly over the course of the last week, already been adhering to these guidelines where we are watching, in particular, over the last week, a wet bulb, the WBT. And it gives you a range, and it, it's a, it's a handheld device. And we knew that as we were getting towards the 76 to 77 range, that we were getting close. Some principals decided to pull their students in from outside for recess or PE, et cetera. But we wanted to establish some overarching guidelines, so that we're very clear with the community, as well as our coaches, advisors, principals, teachers, on the safest way to proceed when we have extreme heat and extreme cold. And so this, we wanted to bring this forward for the community. This will be posted on our website. And again, it is currently being in use by our principals and athletic directors. And I'd like to thank the, the group of folks who kind of served on this mini task force, so to speak. Susan Ailer, Marshall Rutter, Kendra Crane, our new, our new nurse manager, as well as Desa Stone, our new athletic director at the high school. And so we tried to cover all of our areas, as well as Ms. Dawson. Thank you very much. And that is all this evening, Madam Chair, for reports and recommendations.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Horneck. So I think, Jim, you have a Governor's School report?
Yes. Blue Ridge Governor's School met at 1:00 PM on September 6th, and we meet at Zion's Crossroads. I'll talk a little bit more about the Governor's School, but it's basically, it's a regional high school, but it's, we don't go to, we don't ask the students to go to a building. It's a school within a school at Orange High School and the seven other counties that we're involved with. Actually, I've written an article about the Blue Ridge Governor's School that explains how it works, and it'll be published in my community this Friday, and I'll get it on my website, because it tells how the school works and how it functions in, in what I hope is a reasonable way so that people can understand what we're trying to do there. But it involves seven counties. They happen to be Fluvana, Goochlin, Louisa, Nelson, Orange, Green, and Madison County. I, I usually say why those counties. I think it's because we all have one high school, so we all share in it equally. So we decide how many students from Orange, and how many students from this county, and how many students from that county. We just, the board that I work on just divides it up equally with that. We have very good attendance at our meeting. This meeting I just attended, we had representatives from all seven districts there, so we had a full board there. We don't take too long. We get down to business, because we also invite the superintendents to attend. Seven superintendents is taking up a lot of time of people to get paid a lot of money. So I try to keep the meetings as short as possible. The agenda is, for the last meeting is on the website. Just look up our meeting today. Not only that file there, but it has links in it that are active, and you can go read in more detail. Finally, I would like to say that Blue Ridge Governor's School, and there are 19 governor's schools in Virginia, we're just one. But by Code of Virginia, we have to be evaluated by the state every six years. And we just went through an evaluation, and the result of that evaluation, the report of the evaluation is on the website also. It's 20 pages long. But I consider it quite a good evaluation. Now, how does that come about? An evaluation team actually came to the Blue Ridge Governor's School back in March for three days and went to the different schools, and actually talked to the teachers, talked to the students, and actually wrote up this report. And so if you look on, if you look on the agenda of that meeting, the meeting was on Wednesday, the agenda says, we haven't gotten an evaluation report yet. Guess what? Thursday morning, it came in. So now, we have the report, and I'm very pleased with it. And that concludes my report. Unless there are any questions.
Thank you. Well, Jim, I was going to add that last week, we had the opportunity, the Secretary of Ed, Dr. Lisa Coons, secondhand, was here, Dr. Jeremy Rayly, and did a tour of our schools, was in a building, was here at Head Start, visited some of our career and technical classes, and was, huh?
And Gordon Barber.
And Gordon Barber, and was quite impressed with things that we're doing here in Orange County, and how we're doing it. Had lots of questions of solved things, how things are going well, wanted to know what the secrets were. And I had my second meeting with Dr. Coons on Friday. So a lot of good stuff coming around the state, and excited about meeting with the Secretary of Ed, and good conversations to be had around that. So good things going on around here. So I just wanted to add that. So with that, can we have closed session certification, please? Oh, sorry. I got it. Mic right here. Let's see. I think that's the right one, mic. Yeah.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A, Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following. Discussion of personnel and the performance of the division employees authorized by Section 2.2, 37A1 of Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees. Discussion of pupil personnel as authorized by Section 2.2, 3711A2 for early admission, waiver of compulsory attendance out of county, out of district requests, and student discipline. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the school board regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A and Section 8 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
No, second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We're in closed session.
Back to order. Closed session certification please, Mr. Jones?
Yes ma'am, whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board that such closed session or closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies it to the best of each member's knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed; two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was to be preferred discussed or considered.
Thank you, can I have a second?
A second.
Roll call Ms. Byram.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the vote as follows: four yes votes, no no votes, with one member absent.
Thank you. Dr. Hornick, does this come with your recommendation for disposition of personnel actions?
Yes ma'am, the pupil personnel actions as well as the personnel actions.
Can I have a motion for disposition of personnel actions?
I make a motion that we approve the personnel agenda that includes employment, resignation, termination, salary adjustment, transfer, and the extracurricular education appointments.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Now disposition of pupil personnel actions.
And Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we set those releases for compulsory attendance through numbers PP 2024-11 through 2024-14.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, motion carries. And I believe that concludes all of our business and so with that I will adjourn this meeting.